That we need to review for further discussion. All right. Yes, ma'am?
For your discretion, on the agenda tonight, on the consent, is a budget amendment for more than a job, which is some federal funding.
Yes.
But we understand that that money's been held up with the shutdown. So we can leave it on there and not contract until after the money comes.
Okay.
Or we can remove it and bring it back at a later time. So I just wanted to like that for you.
Okay.
And that more than a job is the old step.
The old step program, yes.
Got a rename.
Of course, it got a rename to keep us confused. All right. Is there a preference commissioners on keeping it and not contracting until the funds come? Or do you want to remove it? I, yeah, keep it. Okay. We're going to keep that consent agenda. And that way it's ready to go when the funds start to flow again. Hopefully sooner rather than later.
We got an action.
All right. Thank you. And our first, I'm echoing, our first staff update is our Helene Recovery Plan with Rachel Sawyer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So Rachel Sawyer here and representing, for the last time, the Helene Recovery efforts. When we were preparing this presentation, I added the name of our new Helene Recovery Officer, who is going to be officially introduced to you this evening. But Kevin is in the room, Kevin Madsen, so we're really excited to be entering a new phase of Helene Recovery. When speaking with you previously, we've looked at the diagram that shows response and recovery and long-term recovery. And we've talked about having like, we'll have two feet in implementation. This is really that, that moment where we are going to be fully in long-term recovery as we look to adopt the long-term recovery plan known as the Helene Recovery Plan. So you've seen this timeline before, and here we are in November of 2025. We will quickly recap. What I want to talk to you today about is a reminder of the process that we followed to get here, not new information. Share a little bit of new information about the most recent step we just finished, which was the public comment or public feedback round. And get you prepared to see the agenda as it comes up for November 18th, when we present the final plan for action. So you'll recall Envision Buncombe is the branding that we went out under for the community engagement. We also used that same brand to engage community members to talk with us about Swananoa small area recovery and resilience plan and the strategic plan. The idea is to have a sort of this open door for members of the public to engage with us in a variety of topics, including the recovery plan. We did two rounds in the spring, public input, in the fall, public feedback. The public input phase you've heard about, that was tell us what you see as the top priorities for recovery. So we did a big push to get out in a lot of events in zip codes across the county and try to get as many people as possible to take the ranking survey to tell us their ideas. And we had 2,600 responses to that and felt great about that. Then we'll talk about how we turned that into the plan in a moment. But then we took a draft plan out to the public along with the draft strategic plan that you all will be talking about tonight. And this was an online-only engagement. And there were 100 survey responses to the recovery plan. We were gathering for the city and the towns as well as the county. So 34 of them were specific to Buncombe County recovery projects. As a reminder, we included a list of top 10 recovery priorities from the spring. Oops, keep driving in the same direction. What we did with that was looked at those priorities, gathered project ideas from members of the Board of Commissioners, as well as project ideas from the recovery support teams. You remember that kind of wheel looking thing with the different recovery support functions? So ideas from the economy group, ideas from the health and social group, or the group that is working on housing, et cetera. Had an interdisciplinary review committee that narrowed down and selected projects and then scoped them to be included in the recovery plan. I mentioned the jurisdictions. We have a city and six towns. So altogether, seven local governments coming together to produce a recovery plan that includes 114 projects, 31 of which become the responsibility of the new recovery officer and the recovery office that we're standing up to work with their county departments to carry out. What did people say in their narrative responses to our draft plan? We've had some analysis of it. We feel that even though there are 30-something responses, the, the normal rules of statistics you might think of for quantitative data don't apply. This feedback is qualitative in nature, and so we want to look at every comment that comes in. It wasn't something we were able to say, you know, X percent of people rated our plan a certain way, but really reading through and finding themes in their suggestions. We found, in looking at these comments, affirmation that many of the projects that we have put forward are in line with what members of the public might suggest. We also found a lot of suggestions within these themes that are about how we carry out the work, how we prioritize it, how we fund it. And so here are some examples of comments that were specific to implementation. We can't do all of the projects all at once, and they would be very expensive. And so there's a suggestion there about prioritizing, say, infrastructure first, not spending more time than needed on planning and getting right into implementation and making sure that we're working in well coordination, in good coordination with community partners. So what I'll say is that the plan has been modified in slight ways, not in material ways. During our open time of public comment and feedback, we also heard from community partners or department leads on projects saying, hey, can you add this other department as a support or this other community organization as a support on this project? Or can you clarify the project description so that it makes a certain point more clearly? But overall, there were not material changes to Buncombe County's projects within the plan or in those introduction or conclusion sections of the plan. And again, we are continuing to hold on to those survey results that came in and share them with the project implementers so that we're carrying them out in a way aligned with what our community is looking for from us. So we will bring the plan. I have a copy of just our section. So Buncombe County's section alone with our 31 recovery projects is the portion of the plan that will be in the packet next time that we're looking for you to adopt, in addition to an overall vote that endorses the full plan. So each local government responsible for choosing their projects and carrying them out, but doing so together in an endorsed overall plan. So your next regular meeting, November 18th, you will see, not me, but Mr. Radsen, bringing this plan to you for consideration.
There are questions for Rachel?
I have a couple of questions about the feedback.
Sure.
The, can you speak, some coordination was one of the themes that was brought up there. I think coordination with partners, but also municipalities. Can you just speak some to that, what the intent is around that?
The intent of the commenter or our intent?
Our intent.
Got it. So yes, when we were debating whether or not to do a recovery plan, and if yes, what would the scope be? Buncombe County Government and each of our municipalities decided what we have put in the plan are the things that we have the responsibility to carry out. And we also know that there are a lot of system-level needs and solutions that can't live in one area alone. So the economy is a great example, helping small businesses or supporting. We've got that more than a job program actually listed in the recovery plan. Workforce programs and economic development programs aren't county government alone. And we know the city acts in that space, as do towns, as do a lot of those, like the community development financial institutions and other community partners. So it will, what the collaboration will look like will vary by project. It's hard to make one statement that would summarize how it would work in all cases. However, if we've named it within our plan, we think there's enough responsibility that we have and actions that we can take and be accountable for that we can carry out work and report back on that work in contribution to the overall community recovery. Does that get at what you were seeking?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thanks. Just because when, I just want to be able, when somebody in the community mentions that, and we have the ability to share that we are collaborating and working together with this.
Yeah.
And then, so thank you. And I'm just curious on the number two, affordable and accountable housing. Accountable housing, what, what's actually meant by accountable housing?
That was terminology that we came up with while articulating these themes. I would have to probably read the direct responses that fed to that to give you that answer. And we can easily make that list of direct responses available. I'm looking around to see if our strategy innovation person, I do not see.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there other questions? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome.
Next, I'm Rachel. You are still.
This is fun. I maybe I could have worn a different hat to swap out. So when I am not stepping up to support our organization's Helene Recovery work, I serve as your Strategic Partnerships Director. This is not the presentation, so we need to switch to the next presentation. And in that role, I support a number of different types of community investments. And in specific, I'm here to talk to you about passive recreation lands, which is a subset of open space bond. You will recall, and those following along, will recall that this is related to the voter-approved referendum from back in 2022 for open space. That was the same year we also had an affordable housing bond. This dollar amount, the 30 million, was specific to open space. And we called out greenways, land conservation, and recreational activities as focuses within the open space investments. There is a dashboard on buncombenc.gov. A quick and easy way to get to it is through the transparency page. The General Obligation Bonds Oversight Committee follows along with this. And it's great for members of the public and commission to look at, to see how is overall spending going? The, of the 30 million, 17.5 million has already been allocated, and we'll come back to that. Passive Recreation Land Subcommittee is in blue. And it was envisioned that that would be one of a few different pathways that things, that projects could make their way to this Board of Commissioners table to be considered for a bond investment. So the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Board had supported the Recreation Department on bringing forward other projects previously. You will hear on your regular agenda tonight, some recommendations that came out of that dark blue column, the Land Conservation Advisory Board, or LCAB. Right now, we're talking about Passive Recreation Lands Subcommittee. It's actually a subcommittee of those two different boards. So Parks, Greenways, and Recreation put four members in and three members from LCAB. This was their original schedule intended, opened up an application in January 2024, and it had hoped to bring you in October 2024, some investments. They were going to be here at the first briefing on the first Tuesday of October, and that was after the weekend when we had a tropical storm. So that was put aside. Our commitment to applicants and all involved in the process was to revisit in July of 2025. So we did so. We had check-ins with the applicants. Once we got into a newly approved budget year, to informally ask them, how is it going? Is your project viable? If this were to relaunch, would it be timely, helpful? Greenlights there, still a lot of interest and maybe a surprising level of readiness from the slate of previously recommended projects. We did some internal assessment in August, looking at financial information with the Finance Director, et cetera, to make sure the conditions hadn't changed to the point where we wouldn't, we wanted to make sure we would still be recommending to the Board of Commissioners, because this is debt financing. We, in September, asked that all of the applicants to go ahead and officially update their proposals with any changes in scope or budget based on either a year's time passing or based on Helene impacts. The Passive Recreation Lands Subcommittee reconvened in October and provided a new set of recommendations that will come to you on November 18th. From the chair, Kevin Comercode, will be the presenter at your official meeting. So for my presentation, from the staff side, we wanted to make sure we're covering a little bit more of the process points. Commissioners were quite involved at the front end in design. And so just reminding you what it was we said we could fund, which is open to the public, publicly accessible land or other outdoor space where members of the community can participate in passive recreational activities. Examples of that are named out. We offered the opportunity for both acquisition or improvement projects. And we put emphasis on those that might also deliver on greenway components or land conservation components. When we first started the open space bond, there was this thought that 30 million, maybe we could put a third, a third, a third, but 10 million each in each of the buckets, if you will, between conservation, recreation, and greenways. But we found that projects are actually delivering on more than one. It's not as simple as putting them in only one bucket. And so specific emphasis on those that might bring aspects of more than one. And some limitations on what could not be funded are important for you to remember, because there are some projects that are not being recommended because of not being ready. And it's largely as a result of debt planning and engineering and design work not having been done and this funding source not being able to cover it. And finally, when we go into contract with these recipients, they will be committing to keep this public access in perpetuity. So we will be working with county attorneys to figure out the best mechanism for every property to ensure through deed restriction or otherwise that hereforward, that the public will have access to this land. There was a staff review process, a committee, which was largely around eligibility and applying the scoring criteria. That was a committee for many different departments. And then the public members of the, that sit on the Passive Recreation Lands Subcommittee, they had site visits, they had every applicant in for presentations. They really went in deeply and used that to help inform their recommendations. 11 projects were proposed totaling almost 11 million. The kinds of criteria that were used to narrow it down are outlined here. Again, your, your Board of Commissioners approved the scoring tool or the evaluation tool at the front end. So just reminding you of the guidelines that we applied to this process as we went through. Ultimately landing on a set of recommendations at this time for $4,376,262. And so this is what Kevin will be coming to your board meeting on the evening of the 18th to ask for a vote of approval. On the, the top half of the sheet is the ones that recommended for award. And there is a slide on each of these totaling that $4.3 million. This is where the projects are geographically. The items in gray are the ones not recommended for funding, and the ones whose names are written in green are in the recommended list. Oh, and also on the back of that, the yellow is the protected land. So starting with the projects not recommended, Deverve Mountain. This is a project Buncombe County has committed to and supports. But in this particular funding competition at this time, it's not recommended. The reason is, they had applied, Southern Appalachian had applied for a grant to get the rest of the money for acquisition from the county's passive rec. And they had also, we helped them get, apply for another outside grant. That other outside grant came in, so they've withdrawn this application. Buncombe County has set aside other open space bond funding for the development of this site later. So you'll see this in the future, but just not in this particular set of recommendations. The town of Ridge, the town of Black Mountain, put in a proposal for a project on the Ridgecrest Connector, which would give connectivity on the Fonta Flora State Trail a long roadway. However, since the time of application, the position of their local government has changed to where they're not able to commit to doing the early planning, funding the planning, based on other competing and critical priorities happening from Helene. So this one is not being recommended based on readiness. Also, another local government project not being recommended based on readiness is the town of Weaverville's Watershed Trails and Wildlife Preserve. This is the piece of property that is up near Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. That was a previous watershed. The town had originally proposed to program it into trails. And that has been set aside at this time. Their current focus, one of the projects in their section of the recovery plan is wildfire fuel load management, working on all the downed trees on that site. The, the next project here, not recommended, again, not because of value, but because of readiness, is the Fans or Friends and Neighbors of Swananoa. This was proposed pre-Helene and certainly is all the more relevant as we look at supporting that area of unincorporated Buncombe set plans for the future, including potential, there's that same trail, the Fonta Flora State Trail connectivity. It's very near to Beacon Village. However, they, while they do have property owners who are really interested in being at the table and talking to them about allowing easements through their property for the trail to come through, there's not a particular side of the river selected or course for that trail. They've been awarded a feasibility study, so they're going to work on that at this time and hope that this can come back up in the future. To the projects being recommended, just checking on how we're doing on time. Allsome Gardens, this is an acquisition project, a currently, a privately-owned property in the Hominy, along Hominy Creek, in the Sand Hill area, would be a great extension for Inca Heritage Trail, not far from Buncombe County Sports Park. Inca Heritage Trail, not far from Boncombe County Sports Park and Warren Haynes Drive and some of the other housing in that area. So currently owned by a private property owner, looking for Boncombe County to acquire it. So this is a little bit different than the rest of them. You're not awarding a grant of 700 and, or approving a grant of $750,000 for a project. You would be saying, yes, we authorize the county to enter into real estate negotiations to talk about acquiring this project for use for passive recreation, not to exceed $750,000. And there were some conversations leading up to how that number was arrived at, including consultation with planning and the tax office and the property owner himself.
Do we expect they'll need additional funding to make that a reality? Or do we think that $750,000 is seen as enough, adequate at the moment?
We would need extra funding to activate it. And the committee did talk about the great amount of properties that may be coming into ownership by the county through Hazard Mitigation Grant Program acquisition. The same case would apply here. We would have to figure out how to maintain it. If we're going to add features like parking, if we're gonna do an improved trail, that would require funding. But the assessment of the committee is that this is sufficient for the acquisition as well as associated fees like legal costs, closing costs.
While we're on that one, because I do have a question about that one as well. Because you, part of, somewhere, I think, in there, you're making the point that it could be used for an extension of the Inca Heritage Trail. And...
Oh, it is on.
Oh, okay. The, um... And so I just, I want to know more about this. Like, I think we need an update about the Inca Heritage Trail and all that because, I guess, part of my question with this, if part of the reason it's being recommended is because it can tie in with the Inca Heritage Trail, I think we need to understand where we are with the Inca Heritage Trail.
Okay. We can get the Parks and Recreation to provide that for the next presentation, which would be in your packet a week ahead of time.
Yeah, because I want to be able to make, because I'm, I'm certainly interested, but just thinking about it being part of the bigger project versus this only. I think that kind of makes a difference. I just want to have a better understanding.
And there was some discussion, sorry to cut you off, about, does it have recreational value on its own at this time? And the committee found that yes, even if families were able to walk from their housing or park there, that the walk along that section, we can get linear feet, maybe that would help, would get dog walkers or people with strollers prior to any future connectivity. And we'll add some information about Inca Heritage Trail for you.
So all of that, I think, that context, to kind of broaden it out, would be helpful to have a better understanding of what, what the benefits could be now, currently, if it were open to the public, as well as that broader picture with the trail. And then certainly around the funding, because when I look, that seems, just looking at it per acre, yeah, I'd just be curious to know more about the potential funding of that. But I didn't realize when I was first looking at it that it was a complete acquisition. I thought it said conservation somewhere as an easement, and that's a pretty high price for that amount of acreage for an easement.
Would you like me to speak to the funding at this time or help Kevin to have that in his talking points?
Go, go ahead, I guess. Yeah, that way we'll have the context.
The application came in for, with a, with a much higher request amount based on casual comps and a, and a... I feel like there was an appraisal, but anyway, the, the property owner requested $1.6 million as a starting point for this conversation. The tax value of this property is less than $200,000. So there were some things to talk about and understand where they were both coming from. The land had previously been valued at 1.1 or 1.2 per acreable from the property owner, a million dollars. And the tax value is artificially, you might say, low because it was using present use for its agricultural value and is five years old. So the tax office looked at some comps at this present day. This parcel is, has a really unique shape and a lot of it is impacted by floodplain, is in the special flood hazard area. So it's difficult to have a perfect comparison. However, they landed on a per acre range that they felt comfortable and then rounded up essentially to put wiggle room so that there would be enough for closing costs. And I can make sure that Kevin is prepared with those specific dollar amount, like per acre dollar amounts. The other thing just to note is that we've done research with county legal to understand any restrictions about what a county can pay when acquiring property, which is not more than the market rate. However, what the market rate is, is something that is somewhat subjective. So we would just need to make sure that we're keeping legal close throughout any negotiation process. Again, the property owner is aware that the committee, the Subcommittee has recommended a number not near what he originally proposed, and he's still interested in entering into the real estate negotiation.
This is entirely floodplain, so?
Not entirely. You can see that there's housing on one side of the property. And that's the side of the property that you could potentially do something with, but it would be very difficult to develop. And it probably, yeah, I'll stop there.
So I'm, I'm curious, because there's currently a DEQ grant program open for flood mitigation projects. I don't know if this could argue, arguably be a flood mitigation strategy, but it's one thing to think about as we're looking for funding to help.
There has been some mitigation done on Hominy Creek to mitigate flooding impacts. This, in terms of the property being, coming into county ownership, it's not eligible for HMGP because there's not any structures on it that would be threatened.
So I'm thinking more about a DEQ flood resiliency. I think it's $20 million right now.
Is it stream bank restoration work?
That's, that qualifies for it. Land preservation, if it helps create...
Let's take a look.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm pulling, I'm gonna find more information.
Okay, we'll take a look. Often, acquisition as a mitigation strategy is limited to when there's a piece of infrastructure threatened. So if there's a bridge or roadway or a home, it's easier to get there. And this being already undeveloped, I would guess it might be difficult to fund, but I don't know the ins and outs of that funding source yet. Do you have any other questions about this one for today? Haw Creek Community Association has responsibility for the development of a path that will cross two parcels, City of Asheville at the bottom of Haw Creek Park and a private property that has entered into a conservation easement. And this path will go, nature path, from Beverly Road over to Arco Road, including the development of a bridge. And so their costs did go up slightly from the 2024 numbers with material costs and needing to move the location of the bridge slightly. And they are recommended for $127,74. Gateway Park is a project of Riverlink that is along the Riverside Drive corridor. It would offer some green space. It's already owned by Riverlink and they're looking to do some development on it so that when that, well, bicyclists and others already use that corridor. And when the future greenway comes in, it will provide a stop along that path. And so this is a development project. I want to say the costs did not change.
Where are we physically? I know, I see Riverside Drive, but, you know, that's...
Pearson Bridge Road is right there. So if you're standing on Riverside Drive, looking at Pearson Bridge, there's a outfitter company on the left and there's a empty space on the right. Yep. There's some railroad tracks.
To, to the right, there's...
It's long and skinny.
Oh, north is to the right.
This is to the right.
Yeah, maybe that map should have been upside down.
Is the map upside down? Am I insane? What's happening? North is to the right, okay. I know where you're going, continue.
I appreciate it. I know it's not just me. All right. So that was Riverlink, there were no changes. Hominy Creek Greenway, similar to Haw Creek, you've got a community-based organization, Friends of Hominy Creek, using a fiscal agent under Asheville Green Works, that has responsibility for maintenance of this property in an arrangement with the City of Asheville. And there's an existing greenway there. This would make improvements and actually move up and a little bit away from the waterway, the path, and link with two other recently completed trail projects. This is a recommendation for $326,000. And that was a slight increase, roughly $13,000 as a result of labor and material cost changes since last year.
Do you happen to know, I see that it's .4 miles for that connector? Do you happen to know, once it links the two, then how many miles of connected trail?
I can get that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Warren Milton College had previously approved, applied for funding to spread across all of their trails across campus. HALEEN heavily impacted the trails near the river and the farm. And so when they were asked to update their project, they suggested, instead of working on the whole trail system, could they concentrate the funding on the section of trails that now need extensive rebuilding? They're doing some interesting things on campus with both debris removal and trail development, looking for it to be somewhat of a demonstration project using different methods and utilizing some in-kind labor from, from students and professors on campus. So this came in at $141,000, went up to $150,000, and they're resubmitted and is recommended for that level. This, I'm, I'm waiting for some confirmation on to what extent this footprint on their campus overlaps with the conservation easement that you're going to be talking about later. So I don't have details on that, but I know that it's the same, obviously, the same organization participating through both channels. Also on Riverside Drive in the Town of Woodfin, they have requested funding and are being recommended funding through the Passive Recreation Process for $2.1 million. This is the existing park. So next to it, they're building the new park with Taylor's Wave and some of the other new features and amenities. This park would be the portion of Riverside Park that already existed and needed improvements prior to HALEEN. They are accessing as much FEMA public assistance as they can get. And they got another grant from Great Trails. So their request went down, they were previously recommended for $2,195,000, and it is now being recommended at $2,134,000. There it is. Just drama. Works Community Forest, this is Camp Greer. They actually adjusted their proposal and reduced the number of trails somewhat as a result of some state funding. I think it was that Fairview Park development funding. This is, there's a portion of this property that is used for, for camp and for youth programming. This section would develop eight miles of multi-use trails with parking available to the public. Altogether, it opens up 254 acres, including 33 newly conserved and 14 miles of trails supported, across seven projects totaling $4,376,262, which is circled there. I also want to move on. I see a question on your, the tip of your tongue, but let me get through another section. Seventeen and a half million dollars was committed. Remember that, that was on the dashboard, previously committed to other things. There's $2,531,900, so two and a half million in the pipeline on its way to you sometime between tonight and February from LCAB, from the Land Conservation Advisory Board. And so if we earmark that figure, the third one down, anticipated conservation easements, and then we plug in the number of $4 million, the $4.3 million that's going to come recommended from Passive Rec, your leftover is $5,558,168. To put a finer point on it, should you wonder what was already committed and what's in the pipeline, actually, the pipeline is, the anticipated ones aren't broken out here, but the, we, we do have that and can provide that as needed. We're, that's a little bit more detail that says the same thing, which is that we're looking at a remainder of funds of just over $5.5 million. The Subcommittee, when they were done voting on the projects they did want to fund, took another vote to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that you retain that remainder of funding for future projects that could include, maybe some of those ones that weren't ready yet because they needed planning and design, maybe some other community-led projects that we don't know about yet, that didn't apply before, maybe some county-led projects, such as programming those properties that are potentially going to come into county ownership through HMGP or other park development that might be eligible. So they see some potential for community or county-led projects in future cycles. And would like to bring to you those two recommendations in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my first comment is, is just that I love this subcategory even more than we originally thought it up because it involves both, there's so much public-private partnership going on with just great public facilities that the public's going to get to enjoy. to enjoy one day. But my question is, you alluded to my question, which was, in all the time and effort that went into kind of reviewing that list of projects and recommending approval of some and denial of others, what came up that might lead you to believe what amount of projects are out there that are either in the early planning stages or what's the need out there in the community for this type of funding? Can you tell?
I'm not sure that I would be in a position to speculate. When we opened the call for proposals, you know, we put some criteria around it and got roughly $11 million worth of asks. So it seems theoretically that if we called for proposals, we could allocate the remainder of those funds in another cycle. And also, we had a great precedent from when we had COVID recovery funds. You might remember that we, when we had this $51 million that could be used in a million ways, we said nonprofit organizations, local government partners, and county departments, anyone that has your ideas for projects, put them in and we'll evaluate them. That's sort of what this committee was thinking of because they've heard from Allison Daines, the Parks Director, and they've heard from the Agriculture and Land Director, et cetera, about future things the county may be entering into. So have that sense that, you know, we may need some funding to, for county-led passive recreation as well.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. And I'm excited to see, see these projects being brought forward after all that time. So thank you for your work of picking that up and then getting it, getting it back going. To the, to their recommendation, I definitely have a few questions about their recommendation to commit all those funds because we've not necessarily so that's taken a big step. I'll share. So there's a few things. Like when I look at that list, I don't see anything on there about the Anka Heritage Trail, which is obviously a conversation that we have to have in relation to what we were just talking about with Folsom.
This list?
Yeah, this list. And, and then with some of the things that are on there, like with the Woodfin, we've seen in the past that sometimes the costs do get, go up, right? So part of my hesitation with just saying, oh, we'll commit, even though all those things that they're recommending are great, and I agree. And I mean, and hopefully we can use those remaining funds for all these things that they're thinking about. But knowing that sometimes we've made a commitment to the Woodfin one, right? What if it goes up a couple hundred thousand? We would want to make sure we would be able to finish that up. Or also, I would want to make sure, I know we just approved several conservation projects a few meetings ago, and we definitely need to make sure that funding is included in here. And sometimes they have to make a slight adjustment on those.
Yeah. What I would say from a staff perspective, I know you are not necessarily asking for my opinion, but I'm going to show this slide that shows the committees with way back at the beginning. Their, the wording of their recommendation was to earmark the funds for future passive recreation lands subcommittee recommendations. Another pathway could be to earmark the funding for committee, committee or subcommittee recommendations in general so that it has the ability, availability to come through one of these paths. I wasn't there for every meeting. You might remember there was a different staff person that facilitated prior. And I know there was a lot of conversation at this committee about Commissioner Shetisides not having followed through a specific committee recommendation process. And so that I, that was on some of the minds of the members of the committee when they were talking about it and putting it forward.
About the fact that we set aside funds for D-Review and for Ferry Road.
Yes. As a listener to committee meetings, I'm understanding where you're coming from and offering information so that you can understand where that came from. It's not, not a staff recommendation, it's a committee recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. Useful information.
Questions for Warren?
I do have one.
Yes.
I hope it's not that hard. The town of Black Mountain, you explained that why they weren't ready. Could you explain why fans, just in case, because I'm out and just want to know a lot. And I just want to be prepared for any questions this has.
Fans would like to, actually, when they first came in, they were proposing that we purchase some property. When they first submitted it, it was the Woodman. I think that's why it says Woodman in the name. There was a Woodman of the World civic group that was out there and that land was for sale, but it got purchased by another buyer before this application process was able to go through. But they changed the application and said, rather than own it, we can accomplish the same thing with easements. So they've talked to property owners and they find that they're favorable, that there's appetite to let the trail come across private property using easements. But they don't have a path for it yet. So there would be no way to spend the money until they get that plan designed. And this doesn't fund design. So they did get a feasibility grant. They're going to do their feasibility. And then once they're further along, if there's an open application process, they would be able to come back. And we have met with the not recommended projects as well. So they're fully up to speed.
Additional questions? Thank you so much. And Warren, we appreciate your work with recovery.
Talk just completed and this, we have completed homeowner grant for the year. So these numbers should be final. And this is just giving you the amount of applications we've taken over the five years that we've run the program. Talk just real quick because maybe there's been confusion about homeowner grant because there've been other municipalities participating in those things over time. When you apply for the homeowner grant, you actually are applying to Buncombe County. It just so happens that if another municipality, it's not a separate application for the city of Asheville or for the town of Woodfin. It's a, because all of Buncombe County, this municipality sits on all of Buncombe County. So you're applying with us for that. It just so happens that if Asheville has participated for the five years, then we use that same application and they just get more money. They get a check, you know, money from this county and from the city of Asheville. And for the first two years, Woodfin participated and they got a check from the county and from Woodfin. So it's just really truly is an application for, so we're trying to simplify the presentation so you understand that. Because it kind of gets confusing if you have different municipalities on there. So we took 821 applications this year, which was down a little bit from last year. But remember, last year was a little bit of an anomaly because we opened homeowner grant up for a week in November after the storm because of those last four days of September were lost for people applying. We took almost of the applications in that week as we did the three months prior to Helene. So that was a little anomaly. And this, all right. And these are the approved applications. And so this includes all municipalities and Buncombe County. And we approved 569 applications this year. I thought this slide would be useful for you because I know we've had this conversation when I met in June about policy and the number of applications, does that have effect or whatever? These are the reasons that applications got denied. And if you'll see, the number one reason was for 105 denials. They either had a duplicate application, they applied more than one time, or they own multiple properties, meaning that they had two or three different properties and none of them were their primary residence. Next was failed to supply required information. For the most part, we take client statement for most of the information, but if there's some discrepancies that we can't resolve, we'll ask the homeowner for information and a lot of times they don't provide that information. And then the elderly disabled exclusion, remember, if you're already receiving a state property tax exemption, you're not eligible for this program. So we had 46 people who were receiving, who applied who were already receiving a state property tax exemption, elderly disabled. Then only 23 of that were over income. So most of the people were not necessarily, very few are very over income. 12 withdrew, not the owner, seven people. Disabled exclusion for state property tax is four, and then not the primary residence is four. So as you think through the policies and such, I thought that side would be helpful for you. Amount spent, we spent in Buncombe County this year for those 569 applications, we spent $170,700. And if we'll look in the little box on there, I think it's important, we budgeted for Buncombe County $155,000 for service dollars. The city budgeted $75,000. And then we had some administrative dollars to run, help run the program because we had contract staff to help run this program. And I will say that we, we had some administrative dollars left over, so we had enough money to cover our service requirement for the program. That's why we didn't have to come back to the managers and ask for more money. There were enough administrative dollars left over to cover what we spent. Questions about that? One more demographics. I promise I will change the online application next year. We let people opt out with reporting. It's not a required field. But we're going to make it a required field on our line of application. I mean, it doesn't determine eligibility or whatever, and people can still not fill it out and their application will go through. But we want to make sure that people report because when you have 387 people who don't report, your data's not very good. You really don't know who you're serving. I mean, that's almost half of the applications. And then last but not least, applications by zip code. If you notice, I think this has been true all five years. Usually two, eight, and six is where most applications are received from. And they accounted for 19% of all applications approved. I think that's it.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate your presentation. A couple of questions. How do we contact past recipients to encourage them to apply, encourage them to apply again next year? Because it's concerning that we're seeing a decline when we know there's a need. And I imagine most folks probably don't become unqualified the following year. Most folks probably could qualify year after year. So how are we contacting the folks that were, received the grant last year?
Our Cape folks and Lillian's folks, we put out notification about when the program opens on all kinds of different sources to make sure people are aware of the program. I will tell you that, and you're right, I get calls all the time, folks, about when this program opening back up, you know, we use the same July 15. And the Tax Department also throughout the year will inform people about the program and when it's opening because there are some people who apply, apply for those state exemptions and maybe don't qualify or whatever. So they may be over income. For those state exemptions, we'll be eligible for homeowner grant. So they make referrals too, and they, they generally know when we're going to start the program. So yeah, I would be open to any suggestions you may have.
So folks who received it the year prior don't get just a single letter saying, you received this last year, now it's time to apply again? I mean, I know that's part of the tax bill that they get. We did include that in there, but there's no direct outreach to past recipients?
Now, that's a great question. It just jogged my memory because I think we had a discussion about that the first year we ran the program. And that's whether or not people would have to reapply every year or would we just like recertify them to some extent? And I think we landed on reapplying, but we didn't really necessarily talk about do we notify people? And I think that that's certainly an option. I think that that's something we could do. We have names and addresses and usually email addresses of people that we've approved.
We don't do, we don't do a direct mailing to them again?
No, or even better, a reapply, just automatic reapply could be.
They would, they would still need to verify like income because it is an income-based process. It is not a direct mail. So we struggled. And that's one of the reasons we veered away from saying, we'll have to come and recertify. So they'll still have to bring in data. We felt it was easier for them to reapply than us saying, you have to come back every year and recertify. It is a human services program. So.
Right. Okay. And then the other question I had as far as policy design and how we can make it more efficient in future years. Is there a reason why we have to exclude elderly and disabled folks who already receive a benefit? And the same goes with disabled veteran exclusion. I spoke with a neighbor, encouraged her to apply. She called and said, I didn't get that because I already, I've already got a property tax exclusion. So is that, do we need to refuse folks that, that opportunity solely because of that?
I'm trying to remember. You weren't in that seat at the time.
Yeah, I wasn't. But I think the idea is, is number one, that this program is more of an income, it's not like a tax. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll help with that. It truly is an HHS program. We tried to model it on the programs we already administer, you know, the public assistance programs such as SNAP and Medicaid and things like that. Because I think legally, what, what the law says is that, you know, from a county standpoint, we can run welfare programs, we can't run a tax program. And so that's why it truly is called a homeowner grant program. And it's not specifically set for tax. People can make a choice about where they would like to direct the money, which would be toward homeowners' insurance or a mortgage.
So it should be something separate from whether they get a tax exemption or not. And basically, it would be based on the income, right? Because basically, you are allowed to have social, or you are allowed to enact social services programs that benefit individuals that have, that are low to moderate income. And that's pretty much like the baseline as to what you can use money or tax dollars for. So I think as long as you fit that within the parameters, okay.
I think it could even improve the program. I mean, if we're not supposed, if, if their property taxes are relevant to the program, I think we could even exclude that. We could remove that exclusion as for future years.
And I will say that, I mean, I gave you this slide with the denial reasons, but when you apply online, it goes through a series of questions. And a lot of people, it kind of screens them out because it does have some of those policy requirements on it. So you, they probably didn't end up applying.
Let me add. Happy to take a look and see. I can't specifically remember why we did what we did back then, but I'm happy to go back and take a look and let you all know if there's something or if I can figure out the reason why we did. and take a look and let you all know if there's something or, or if I can figure out the reason why we did what we did.
Yeah, and that sounds great.
Thank you, Kurt.
And then the other, only the piece of that is, do we have any additional funds left after this year, considering the way fewer folks applied than last year? Do we still have some of that money left in, in the reserves?
It's an annual, so that would go away and it's an annual allocation.
Right. Do we have any left from this year's allocation that was unspent, left in the program?
So we had 170 that we spent and we had.
We spent all the service dollars we had. We had some administrative dollars left over that we used to cover those service dollars.
So short answer is no, because normally we have to pay someone else to come in. And when we started this program, it was during COVID and staff had time to really work on this. But now that we're doing this program on an annual basis, we have to bring in some temps or we have to do something else to cover that. And that's where that additional service dollars came from to do this work.
Have we used all of the funds every year that we've had the program? Not every year.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
The first year, I think we used, when we came back to the commissioners to ask for their money because we took almost 2,000 applications. The second year, the reason you see that precipitous drop in the number was the, was the reserve. I mean, that, that changed the number of people who applied. The second year, I think there were dollars left over.
That reserve was the biggest reason why we had that drop. We put that, you can't have all the cash, you can't have liquid reserves over a certain amount. That's what changed the numbers more than anything else. All this had the exemptions on the tax side, but the reason that it really changed was that reserve amount.
I mean, if you look back after the first year, at those four years and take the anomaly of Helene out, it's, it's, it's pretty consistent.
One more question I have. Now, I'm low income and I'm a veteran. I don't qualify for this.
You do qualify except if you get your, your house already reduced from the state. So if you already get the veteran's exemption from the state, then you don't also qualify. So I don't remember why, why we set it up. I have to go back and look at data. But it was set up that if you're getting assistance already through the state exemptions for your house, you, you weren't also getting this piece.
I think we were just looking to expand.
To cover as much as.
To cover as much as possible. That's my best recollection of that. Further questions?
Was the answer to the question, can we do a automatic renewal of last year's approved folks? That's, that's no, we can't do an automatic.
That preference would be not to do that because it is a welfare type program. Which means you will have to get recertified. So you're still going to have to come in and bring in data to prove that you're eligible. So the easiest way to just put the application back.
It would, you really wouldn't be saving anybody's time to, a recertification versus an application. It's basically the same thing.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
All right, Philip, thank you very much. We appreciate your work on this. Commissioners, we will need to adjourn and have a motion to go into closed session. And from that closed session, we will recess to go into our 5:00 PM meeting. We will make our way as quickly as possible to the conference room upstairs. May I have a, I guess Kurt will do the motion to go into closed session.
Yes, we need a motion to move that the Board of Commissioners go into closed session for the following reason. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee. The statutory authority is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6.
I move that we go into closed session on the grounds enumerated in GS 143-318.11A6.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Second, thank you. All right, all in favor? We are in closed session. We will meet upstairs quickly.